Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, May 14, 2024. Would Kirk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, should we give a moment of silence for Sarah Weck?
Oh, yes, thank you. We'll also have a moment of silence for Sarah Weck and his family.
Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, beginning with Council, okay, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Mosley.
Would everyone from the Linden Garden Club like to join me up here? So the Linden Garden Club is celebrating 100 years and so those of us who represent, jointly represent Point, well, who formerly and currently represent Point Breeze Neighborhoods in Pittsburgh, we wanted to, we wanted to, to make sure that there was, there's good representation for this momentous occasion. Whereas, the Linden Garden Club was founded in 1924 by Mrs. William H. Mercer, Mercur.
Mercer.
Mercer, we got it, okay. And the membership was made up of women from the Point Breeze Neighborhoods surrounding Linden Elementary School. And whereas, over the past 100 years, the Linden Garden Club has worked to raise money for Fripp's Conservatory and Botanical Gardens, the Western Pennsylvania Audubon Society, the Pittsburgh Parks and Recreation Division of the City of Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh Botanical Gardens, the Western PA Conservancy, and other organizations in Allegheny County that support their mission. And whereas, the mission of the Linden Garden Club is to stimulate the knowledge and love of gardening, to aid in the preservation of native plants and birds, and to encourage interest in civic beauty and preservation. And whereas, the club has founded and supported gardens in Mellon Park, Shenley Park, and now the Bob O'Connor Golf Course on Shenley Drive. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the Linden Garden Club's vibrant and diverse organization of members who share a passion for gardening, horticulture, and conservation. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, May 19, 2024, to be Linden Garden Club Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank the council people for helping the Linden Garden Club make this proclamation. So we go down in history as being active for the past 100 years. And we're really very fortunate to live in this and to have such a good response from city government. It was wonderful that you helped us put this together and it means a lot to our Linden Garden Club members. Thank you.
Can we get all members up here for a photo, please?
Councilwoman Gross.
Can everyone who's here for Affordable Housing Month come on up front? Everyone knows, I hope, that City Council has been working for years on trying to add more affordable housing to the city. As housing prices have continued to increase, rent has continued to increase. Our, our council president led the way years ago when I was just starting on council nearly 10 years ago. And we've seen prices increase. Come on, come on closer. I always like to tell people your television camera's right next to the clock back there. That's where everybody, the camera's next to the clock back there. That's where you're looking. And so we're, we can't do this work alone. And we're grateful that we have such a wide participation of citizens and community groups and neighborhood groups who are all helping us solve this problem because the prices aren't just high in one neighborhood in the city. They're really reaching to all corners of the city. People are really struggling to find apartments that they can rent so they can remain city residents and struggling, certainly struggling to buy houses. We're seeing homeownership decrease. So with that, whereas affordable housing is one of Pittsburgh's greatest needs, and whereas in October of 2021, Pittsburgh City Council passed a resolution declaring that housing is a human right. And whereas, the 2022 City of Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Needs Assessment reported that there is a shortage of over 11,000 housing units affordable to households at 50% of the city's median income. And whereas, according to the 2020 census, the city of Pittsburgh's population has been in decline since 2000, with its population decreasing 0.89% over the last decade, but 13.4% of Black residents leaving the city. Whereas advocates attribute this drop in population to a lack of quality affordable housing within the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, 1/3 of Pittsburgh residents spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which is considered cost burdened, increasing the likelihood that these households may have difficulty paying for other necessities such as food, transportation, or healthcare. Whereas Pittsburgh City Council declared homelessness a public health emergency due in part to the lack of affordable, safe housing in the city. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh has taken steps to explore various solutions to this affordable housing crisis, including limited equity housing co-ops and accessory dwelling units. Two of my favorites. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh has established the Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District to ensure new developments in several city neighborhoods experiencing hyperinvestment and gentrification will have some direct benefit for those struggling to find affordable housing. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh established the Housing Opportunity Fund, pledging $10 million annually for the creation and preservation of affordable housing opportunities, and that's about $70 million to date. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh welcomes the recent federal grant of $50 million under HUD's Choice Neighborhoods Program, as well as CDBG funding and other affordable housing funding. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh has found that the efforts listed above are still not sufficient to address the scale of Pittsburgh's affordable housing crisis. Whereas, local groups like City of Bridges, Community Land Trust, the Housing Justice Table, Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group, Action Housing, and more continue to be vital partners in furthering the availability of affordable housing. Whereas, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh has urged the US Senate, the United States Congress, and the Biden Administration to increase and expand federal funding for affordable housing programs such as the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, as well as pass federal legislation including the preventing the algorithmic facilitation of Rental Housing Cartels Act, which is where they do price fixing across apartment management companies, and the Stop Predatory Investing Act, and the Neighborhood Homes Investment Act that will help ease the affordable housing crisis. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes May 2024 as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I want to, I want to give everybody here an opportunity to introduce themselves or have some words. I'm not sure what your order is here. So I will hand out, who wants to take the proclamation? I have four copies actually, but who wants to, who wants to take officially? There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who wants to take the mic?
I bring you greetings. No, I'm Tanika Harris, new staff member with Catapult Greater Pittsburgh. It is a privilege and an honor to be here today. A lot of us have been doing this work because we've lived the work. We also have education in those areas, but there's nothing better than to have lived experience. And so what you're seeing here is a representation of human beings who have gone through housing crisis, who have family members who are in the part, who are in the midst of it. And we are actively working from a trauma-based perspective to be able to meet the needs of people. We recognize government can't do it all. And I'm saying that because I recently came from the government, so I understand and I know what the work is like. But because government can't do it all, it is so important to empower citizens to help to do the work, to listen to us. We know what we're talking about. We're doing it. We're actively working with your neighbors, with your individuals and your communities. And these are the individuals that are making it happen. I'm privileged to speak on it as a new staff member, but I'm honored to stand here next to every single person here. We have a Catapult Board Member. These are the directors of Catapult. And we also have our friend from PCRG, Chris, who invited us to be here today. So thank you. Representation matters. Know that we are going to diligently continue to do the work, whether we're funded or not, because we believe in doing the work and the money will come. Thank you.
My board member says get up there. I'm gonna listen. Chris Rossello, Director of Policy at PCRG. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross and her colleagues on council for joining communities across the country and declaring May Affordable Housing Month. And Councilwoman Gross listed a lot of the numbers that we know. We have an old housing stock, a disparity in homeowners between Black and white homeowners. We need more rental units and we need more homeownership opportunities. So really looking forward to this month. There's a variety of meetings and activities. I know Councilman Mosley called a post-agenda meeting on affordable housing and attainable housing. So looking forward to that. So, thank you.
All members.
One, two, three, suck it in.
One more time.
No, I can do mine now.
Alright, President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Gino, come forward please with your friends and family. That was your brother. I couldn't see who it was. Actually, I'm gonna say, you know, Gino has been coaching and playing part of basketball, come over here, for a very long time. You may know his dad, his county councilman, Bob Palmesina. Come up here, Bob. And, but he has, they, together they coached the little dribblers, and they can talk to you a little bit more about that. But, so he started at a very young age playing basketball. So he's had a really, some really great honors and we thought it was time we recognized that. Whereas, Gino Palmesina was named 2024 Pittsburgh Post-Gazette Coach of the Year and one of the 24 winners of the KDKA Radio Super Seven Basketball Coach of the Year Awards. Both awards take into consideration all coaches in the WPIAL and Pittsburgh City League. And whereas, Gino began his coaching career while in college, well, they say that, but he really started young with his dad, in college at Duquesne University, where TJ McConnell, now in his ninth season of the NBA, was his roommate. Let me just say, he had a roommate who plays professional basketball and a roommate that plays professional football for the Steelers, right? Something in that room, I think. With, for three years, he was also a member of the practice squad for the Duke's Women's Team, which also consisted of male students. And whereas, this year marked Gino's second year as head coach at Moon. Prior to coming to Moon, Palmesina coached at his alma mater, Bishop Cannavon, where the team won two WPIAL titles and one PIAA crown in four seasons under his leadership. And whereas, Palmesina led the Moon Tigers Boys Basketball Team to its 10th section title in the school's history with a perfect section record. You'll have to explain that to me. The last time Moon had an undefeated section season was, was in 1946. This year, Moon won the WPIAL Class 5A Championship with a fourth quarter comeback against Franklin Regional. Moon also made it to the WPIAA semifinals and finished with a 26-4 record. And whereas, the Tigers were 7-14, 3-16, and 6-16 in three seasons before Palmesina took over, and was 12-11 in his inaugural season. Gino believes in his humble coaching style, which is how he lives his whole life, where 75% of the team's success is, is good players and getting the team to play hard for you. And the 25% is because an entire coaching staff. And whereas, during the offseason, Gino hosts basketball camps for children and youth. And he is currently the Executive Director of the City of Pittsburgh's Pension Office, which he'll be helping me with pretty soon. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Gino Palmesina and congratulate him for his honors as head coach of the Moon Tigers. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 14, 2024, to be Bangsville's Gino Palmesina Day, Gino Palmesina Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Gino.
I'll be real quick, short. Thank you to Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith and all of council for this awesome honor. I know this means a lot to my family, so I really appreciate that. You know, I fell in love with sports and coaching on the ballfields of Westwood, you know, Westwood Oakwood Athletic Association, where I had some great coaches, like my father who's up here, and also one of my coaches, Tom Smith, Councilwoman's husband.
He's my older daughter.
So it all kind of started on city ballfields. You know, when I was coaching, I'm my alma mater, coached kids from all over the city of Pittsburgh. Again, I just want to thank you guys for doing this for me. Thank you.
Come on, Bobby. No, I really don't. I just want to say congratulations to you, you know?
Coach of the Year.
And we have two to be read into the record from Councilwoman Warwick.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 16, 2024, to be Emma Alper Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Warwick also presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 18, 2024, to be Pittsburgh Poetry Exchange Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited, matters are concerned, official action or deliberation which may be before City Council, per fealty is not permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsehoover, Alm, Germany, which is the birthplace of Jewish German Dr. Albert Einstein. I'm a member of the American Physical Society, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Optimal information and intelligence in ISU metric, which is unknown to KD, Pixie, and Tay in this city. Concern of county and city which share oversight of the city-county building is safety. In Amorado, Katena, Genie, Lavelle, in our view are not responsible regarding radiologicals using antiquarian non-metric units. There are 191 countries that go along with the ISU metric and three, only three that are non-metric, the United States of America, Liberia, and Myanmar. The city-county building is not radiologic safe. No checks in the entry for device EM radiation, lasers, liquid nukleares. This council room is not radiologic safe. There are no monitors showing device EM, laser, and liquid presence. How can this, how can the officer in this room do his job or her job? It's impossible. Africa, Nigeria, Haiza, safety of Maj Hankali, no Orion, smart device. Electromagnetic EM radiation in SD operations via semiconductors, SC. A conductor is up to 10 to the ninth Siemens per meter max EM flow. An insulator is as low as 10 to the minus 15 SM to M min EM energy flow. Semiconductor 10 to the 5 to 10 to the minus 7 SM. The Siemens is the EM conductance measure and the watt, the EM mass measure. They're related via volts and amperes. Asia, Japan, and Hong Kong, the safety of smartphone, smartphone, semiconductor. STs are made of materials that transfer electromagnetic energy from SD EM source to chip sister, info intel circuits in our STs in this council room. SC in SD use emits EM radiation in watts that shakes our tissue. The CDC, FCC, and International Commission on Radiation Protection, upper limit SD EM R exposure is 1.56 watts per kilogram over one gram of human tissue. What are your readings in this room? All of you who are councilors are emitting radiation. You need to know what that is and you need to share that with the officer or officers in this room.
Our next registered speaker is Carmen Brown. She's online. Okay, we can hear you, Ms. Brown.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Because I couldn't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Alright, um, yeah, my name is Carmen Brown. I'm from East Liberty. I got a little cold, so you know, bear with me. I want to say this is about, about June 10. The Genie Administration, who is primarily white, had dismantled all Black resources and then took away funds from the following. So I want Black people to hear this. Black residents. The Heritage Day Parade, a pilot program for Black mothers to receive $500. Black entrepreneurship for Black women that Pudido put in place. And I'm saying now June 10 is, is at risk of being changed and hijacked by the Genies' white administration. So I just want everybody to know, all the Black residents to know, don't forget when it comes time to vote it. Because again, they're taking away all, all of Black resources. And now June 10 is at risk of being dismantled and changed into balls of the leg, Black people from Genie Administration, once, once a day. Because I was looking at a tweet and it says, "The time's working, putting a line for the city's goals and priorities." I think the desire is being corrected. So to me, like I said, and, and, and a Black community, you're upset because of the fact that while I was there, even knew what they did, like the trial and trial and fail, you can say from a very, a person who's very successful in you. So again, Black, the Black community, you're going to take heed and heed the score on.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Tony Moreno. I'm a resident of the Northside. I'm here because I want everybody that's watching to listen to what I'm about to show you, to the Black community, everybody that, I'm not talking about the minority community in the City of Pittsburgh, specifically the Black community in the City of Pittsburgh. There's, there's a handful of Mexicans, there's like 0.03% Asians. The Black community is the minority community in the City of Pittsburgh. And what we're about to see is all your council people getting ready to vote against the Black community in the City of Pittsburgh. They are sitting right here, right now, with a predetermined vote about to go out about some money that was baked into the recovery, the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery. The American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Recipient Agreement, Poise Foundation, Western Pennsylvania, Juneteenth Coming Celebration. This is the paperwork that shows the receipts that this man right here, William Marshall, had given to him by Mayor Bill Paduto. It was spelled out in legislation. It wasn't just an idea. It wasn't a request. It wasn't something that they just cooked up. This man started Juneteenth back, I believe, in 2013 and first, I'm not advocating for him. I had never met him until just now. But I know what all you pegging crooking people do when you try to steal money and you're witnessing it right now. So he gets with Bill Paduto and they see this money available and everybody sees what kind of successes they have in his productions, specifically with Juneteenth. And it grows and grows and it gets bigger and bigger and they, he needs help. So he gets a financial commitment right here. There was $600 million plus brought in from the federal government to the city of Pittsburgh on top of all the money that we had budgeted. And that money's been squandered so badly, we have no idea where it's at and now we run out. But more importantly, William B. Marshall's name is written into this. This says he gets $250,000 between June, or 2023 and 2024. There is no RFP mentioned in this legislation. This is approved by the federal government. All of you voted on it. You knew members were about to vote on some robbery, so you can stop it. But city council voted on this, approved it. Nine of you voted, said yes, this is how this money, this tax dollar should be spent to William B. Marshall Productions and only he gets this money. You're about to steal it and give it to somebody in some bounce whatever that nobody knows who they are.
Thank you.
Watch it, Pittsburgh. They're all going to vote right now.
Just for clarity, Pittsburgh City Council members are not about to vote on any contract. Our next speaker is William Parker.
Hello, everyone. My name is William Parker. Glad to be here to support B. Marshall and his event, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh Juneteenth Event. I'm just down here to support B. Marshall. This is a great event. I've seen some of the council members down there participating in previous Juneteens. And I just want you guys to just come up with some way to allocate this man his funding. He, it was already documented, $125,000 was supposed to go to him. It's robbery. If it's not being given to him, this is a simple request. It's a good guy, puts on a great event, it really boosts our economic revenue here in our city and it also showcases and highlights our black talented entrepreneurs, artists. And we need events like this. I mean, this guy's about to bring Master P to the city, Dane Dash to the city of Pittsburgh. That's big, especially in Pittsburgh, in a city where, you know, we have a low rate of black businesses here. That's a really low rate of black businesses and this guy right here helps to increase that percentage. So I just ask all of you guys to, I don't know how you got to work it out or what you got to do, but get this man back his money. You know, Juneteenth is about freeing the slaves. Free this man from any hardship, free this man from any shackles, free this man from anything that's holding him back, from stopping him from putting on a great event like he's always done in the past. So I ask you guys to consider that, work out, come together, put something together. This is embarrassing that we have to come down here and do this, especially under administration of a black mayor. We got city council members, two black city council members sitting up here. I mean, I don't want to have to come down here again about this and you know I don't want to have to get out here and protest about this. So please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina. I, I just saw her leave Zoom. If you come back on, I will call you again. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. No, just give your name, neighborhood for the record. We'll give you three minutes to speak.
How you guys doing? I'm B. Marshall. I'm from the Hill District. So for the past 11 years, we've been doing festival events in the city of Pittsburgh. We actually started the Juneteenth Celebration in the city of Pittsburgh after years of not having that celebration. In 2023, we actually generated $9 million for the city of Pittsburgh with our festival events. We have a Juneteenth, a Black Music Festival, and a Soul Food Festival. We brought in over 100,000 people. We have long-term experience in doing these festival events and we're proud of that. We actually started with maybe 11 people in 2023 and it's grown to over 100,000 people bringing in to the city of Pittsburgh and boosting our tourism. What I'm here today is to discuss the city's process for this recent RFP for the Juneteenth Celebration. We think the process was flawed because the way they applied the process, they, they actually are promoting that somebody had to do a city Juneteenth Celebration. And in the RFP requirements, it doesn't state that. So we applied for the funding through the RFP process. And as we looked at the, the, the legislation requirements, we felt that this funding would go to us because the only major requirement is that you had to have done a large-scale festival event in the past and you have to have experience doing festival events. It did not say that we're going to give you this money to do a city Juneteenth Celebration. If we'd have seen that, we wouldn't apply it. We applied because we already have a Juneteenth Celebration that's in process. It's been in process since January and it'll be the 14th through the 16th this year down at Point State Park and inside of the city of Pittsburgh. So we just want you guys to consider that and look at the process for the RFP that was just recently issued and also what happened with our $125,000 that was allocated for us by city council this year that we have not received. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I want to go back to Ikahana Hal Malkina. It appears you're.
Greetings and good day.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for coming back to me. I appreciate that. Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Hal Malkina. I am the chief of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And as I sat and listened to a lot of the comments today, I hear about $75 million, I hear about $50 million, and I know of the American Rescue Plan Fund, about $335 million, which collectively is a lot of money funneling through the city, not to mention of the other funds that haven't been accounted for and noted in these conversations. Although I watched another building be erected at the edge of town while the city is trying to fill for vacancies, of 30% vacancy of the business district of downtown Pittsburgh. To me, it seems that these funds are not being properly allocated. If you can't fill the 30% of the buildings that are downtown, then why erect a new building? It just doesn't make sense to me. A lot of how these monies are being allocated doesn't make sense to me. And I want to speak about my nation. We've been ignored. We are now moving to era of accountability, equity, and redress, and unlawful adherence to the oath you all took to support, protect, and defend the Constitution. We, the people of America, stand united and committed to eliminate discrimination, gentrification, and marginalization, and assimilation, and inequity that keep us Aboriginal American people, the indigenous people of America, also known as Indians, excluded from development on our land. This is egregious and something must be done. This is our plea to the members of city council for equitable opportunities, free from discrimination. We need a concerted effort and a commitment towards reconciliation and redress. We invite each of you to be trailblazers and honor the many treaties and the oath that are already on the books by blocking legislation that will be presented and brought down to city councils tomorrow. I thank you for your time and have a wonderful day. In my character, peace, light, love.
Thank you. If there's anyone else in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Martha Conley. I'm an attorney here in Pittsburgh and I'm here on behalf of the Black Political Empowerment Project. The Black Political Empowerment Project has great respect for the city of Pittsburgh, for the city's first African-American mayor, his administration, the Poise Foundation, and Mr. B. Marshall of Stop the Violence, who nearly single-handedly brought into existence the Juneteenth Holiday Celebration in Pittsburgh and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as well as coordinated and hosted the Juneteenth Celebration for the last 11 years. We are concerned that we are at an awkward moment among people and institutions we respect. We are concerned that something as important as the Juneteenth Celebration, which should be a celebration for all and particularly for African-Americans, is experiencing a potentially negative moment in America, in the history of the city. It is important for the African-American community in Pittsburgh to be able to celebrate and enjoy this great holiday without equivocation. We are therefore calling for a timeout and for all parties, including the original agreement as to how funds would be utilized toward the cost of Juneteenth Celebration for what we understand to be for both 2023 and 2024. Because we are only a little more than one month from the Juneteenth festivities, it is imperative that this review process take place expeditiously with a view toward resolving all differences in an honest and forthright manner. Again, we make this request in the spirit of Juneteenth so that we may once again celebrate an energetic, positive, and uplifting occasion for all of Pittsburgh. We ask that this process be accomplished with as little animus as possible. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Boy, you still got these seconds here and she made it simple. Okay, my name is Howard H. P. Jackson, BP. Grew up with NACP all my life in Pittsburgh. The reflection of the Juneteenth. Mostly African-Americans done lived and struggled and our children don't even know why, who built the White House on free labor. They don't know about the Juneteenth epics of humanity and we finally got a law to go ahead and skip through the daisies right now. Now this here is today, 2024. Juneteenth has been with us for hundreds and hundreds of years and it's the first time that we could recognize a holiday for African-Americans and Americans, period. Okay, because the blood and sweat of people in general. I'm talking about the Quakers, the abolitionists, and the people with human rights. You know, LBJ back in the day set up the process of civil rights. And Martin, he had to step in the game also to make sure the issue would be established, that we could have delegates, black delegates for conventions today. And Juneteenth is so special. You know, like I grew up going to Sunday school, Brother Dan, Sister Anne, and then I had Robert Exton lived in the back of me and I had to go to Muslim temple on Sundays. I couldn't stand Sundays. But advocating and growing up and my father would take us back and forth down south, it would take two days to get to North Carolina from Pittsburgh back then. I would visit my cousins and visit segregated schools. Now see, I know about America. I know about the struggles, about advocating on just being a man and being accepted in this country. I want you to understand, being accepted in this country, a man of color, a man that has tradition that recognized and witnessed the abuse of African-Americans. But now we have an opportunity to go ahead and save and establish the Juneteenth, to say, we got something. We got something special. We got an identity today. Let's make it happen. You know, let's make it happen. You know, I really experienced the differences of being accepted as a man of color and then being accepted as a man of just being a man who wants to try and have a little human touch and love God. But a lot of us be judged from some of our past activities and where we are today. I'm here to let you know that I'm a man that believes in the Juneteenth and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's at the top of the hill. Mr. Wilson, he's, he's still probably outside, still doing, he's on TV making some kind of statement. Years ago, when I came first start here, was probably was 1999, Furlough taught me about what you as council people supposed to do. You're supposed to sit and listen. I can remember Furlough coming out. It was the man wanted a TV reporter. Can I have a thing? He says, no, I am in the meeting, he says now. He says, I'm independent. He said, well, I'll meet you after the meeting. Now, Mr. Wilson is outside. I wanted to say something directly to him and I'll say it to maybe his, is back in the offices listening. He has Sandusky Court that's on the North Side. My niece lives there. When I went to there and I was giving out corn, because we had a whole bunch of corn from Katie B. Irving's they had given us. And she took and she was telling me in Sandusky, they, those people don't have a food bank and she says they are hungry. They need a food bank. Sandusky Court, that's right on the North Side. I come down because Carmen spoke something about our mayor. He's our mayor. I'll say he's your mayor because he's not mine. Because when I went to him and said, Mayor, there's something that you have done. I need to understand why you did it and if not, I will go to city council and I will blast you. Okay, so he's him. I asked for a meeting. I kept going over there. Twice I went. I said, any Tuesday or Wednesday I'm here, just let me know when I can come. When I see the mayor and I'm telling him, he said, I told you to make appointment. They will not give me an appointment. And this mayor that we have, he's came up in our building and gave Saluddin's brother a plaque and a proclamation. While upstairs, he did not go and see the manager. I asked him, did you go see the manager and ask if he's having any kind of problem? Because he's downstairs giving one of his political opponents, political whatever he is, Saluddin's brother, who just came back from California, gave him a plaque. He spent money for this man. See, this is the stuff that I'm talking about. There's five women came down and said, we are being harassed. Women getting beat with a hammer up in the building. And he's downstairs giving out proclamations to Saluddin's brother. When we, when I say, please have a meeting with me and he won't. He's, when I said, you're up here, he's cleaning in front of, please, we can, my time is up, but we can vote him out.
Hello, Michael Bonnywell, citizen of the streets of Pittsburgh. I, it just really sickens me. I mean, a deal's a deal. If you agreed to give somebody $125,000, give him his $125,000 June 16th or June 13th or however they say that. It brings a lot of money. 13th, or however they say that, it brings a lot of money to Pittsburgh. And I walk the streets, and I see the disparity between the white and black. Like, we're all brothers and sisters of God. Why are we not treating one another as you want to be treated? That was Jesus's one commandment. Like, I love everybody, and I want everybody to have the best that we can. We need to be able to build the cities and bring the businesses back. Where are the bowling alleys? Where are the skating rinks? Where are the things that low-income communities can go downtown? We have all these vacancies in downtown. Why don't we bring things that are affordable for everybody to be able to come downtown? Because I was talking to a man who was working downtown, and he told me that he didn't have enough money to go downtown, and he feel, doesn't feel like there's a place for him. There's no, there's no black Marcus, there's no Mung Marcus, there's no, it's a bunch of, it's nonsense. Why are we all segregated? We need to unify and love one another and bring the businesses back to Pittsburgh. I mean, I didn't really prepare much of this. This is all from the top of my head, but I just say that we can come together as a community and vote the people out that are not doing the job, and we need to figure out where the missing money is. If there's $600 million that was allocated for the city of Pittsburgh, and yet Pittsburgh looks like it's in shambles, someone's embezzling money. This corruption has to stop. The greed has to stop. We need to be able to vote this out and do the right thing for America. And one last thing I want to state about is, why are we flying a maritime war flag here in this courtroom or this city council? That is not an American flag. See the golden tassels on that flag? That is a maritime war flag. This is an American flag. See how I have it on my hat? There's no golden tassels. That's not an American flag. We need to do what's right for America and your constituents and the people who voted for you. I say God bless America, liberty and freedom and justice for all.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 469, Resolution Amending Resolution 586 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Innovation and Performance and Public Safety on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with OST Inc. as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects related to database management and migration and software development to replace key systems by increasing the approved amount by $200,000 and extending the contract by one additional year for an amended total cost not to exceed $626,346.2 over four years. And Bill 470, Resolution Amending Resolution 360 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreements through the National Association of State Procurement Officials Cooperative Purchasing Program with Cherry Road Technologies, permitting the provision of cloud solutions to support the JDE application by increasing the approved amount by $1,341,442.56 for an amended total cost not to exceed $2,391,442.56 over seven years.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 471, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Green Gears for Waste Management Services in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh's Independent State Festival at an amount not to exceed $22,300.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 472, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements with Bounce Marketing and Events to assist in supporting the arts and related artistic production services for a public Juneteenth event in 2024 for an amount not to exceed $125,000 and for the payment of the costs thereof. Bill Number 473, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Mark A. Winters for Arbitration Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,311.38 over one year. And Bill Number 474, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through AN, 225 Wick Street, Council District Number 6, 223 Wick Street, Council District Number 6, 221 Wick Street, Council District Number 6, 2303 Center Avenue, District 6, 2301 Center Avenue, District 6, 2518 Wyandotte Street, District 6, 5316 Hillcrest Street, District 9, 0 Lacston Street, District 9, 7004 Leamington Avenue, District 9, 7002 Leamington Avenue, District 9, 7,000 Leamington Avenue, District 9, 7,100 Monticello Street, District 9, 7030 Monticello Street, District 9, 335 Hale Street, District 9, 333 Hale Street, District 9, 327 Hale Street, District 9, 7925 Sesquahana Street, District 9, 4417 Chatsworth Street, District 5, 4500 Monongahela Street, District 5, 4502 Monongahela Street, District 5, 119 Millbridge Street, District 3, 965 East Warrington Avenue, District 3, 121 Millbridge Street, District 3, 0 Proctor Way, District 3, 1520 Arlington Avenue, District 3, 1526 Arlington Avenue, District 3, 417 Michigan Street, District 3, 233 Augusta Street, District 2, 613 Herschel Street, District 2, 611 Herschel Street, District 2, 513 Lovelace Street, District 2, 2680 Sacramento Avenue, District 2, 2678 Sacramento Avenue, District 2, 823 Souzeman Street, District 1, 1217 Voskamp Street, District 1, 2652 Ellis Street, District 6, 323 Venture Street, District 1, 215 Suncrest Street, District 3, 1635 Maryland Street, District 5, and 1633 Maryland Street, District 5. Bill Number 475, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Sideyard Program, Items A through F, 7317 Attawall Street, District 9, 0 Hazelwood Avenue, District 5, 0 Freeland Street, District 3, 210 Savannah Avenue, District 3, 2651 Veteran Street, District 6, and 2415 Deal Avenue, District 4.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 476, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a License and Maintenance Agreement for Limited Term Public Art with Bike Pittsburgh, Inc., a nonprofit corporation, having a mailing address at 188 43rd Street, Suite 1. Said limited term public art to be installed on the surface of the public right-of-way in a section of roadway in front of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh Woods Run Branch located at 1201 Woods Run Avenue at no additional cost to the city.
And Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Warwick for Councilman Wilson. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 480, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011, effective December 29, 2011, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in Conformance with City Council's 2012 Capital Budget Amendments by Reducing District 1 Neighborhood Needs by $3,751.84 and Increasing Public Safety Cameras by $3,751.84.
And on behalf of myself, if we could read the appointment first?
Council President Lavell presents Bill Number 477, Resolution Reappointing Karen Garrett as a Member of the Housing Authority Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April 30th, 2027.
Do members either motion to approve or interview?
I'll motion to approve. Are we voting?
This is for, this is an appointment to the Housing Opportunity Fund?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the name of it, because it was, it didn't sound like Housing Opportunity Fund, so.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable voting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Her appointment has been approved. Next are two communications.
Bill Number 478, Communication from Sally Stedelman, Manager, Pittsburgh Land Bank, Submitting the Pittsburgh Land Bank's First Quarter Financial Report for the Year 2024. And Bill 479, Communication from City Controller Rachel Heisler, Submitting a Special Report of the City Construction Contract with Garland Company, Inc., dated May 2, 2024.
Need a motion to re-receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 462, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 400, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Equitable Development Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditures of Such Funds. This fund is to be used to address community goals, including but not limited to workforce development and community reinvestment. Bill 419, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Demira Atkins in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,087.6 over one year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to her Vehicle from an Accident with the City Emergency Services Vehicle on December 29, 2023. Bill 423, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 21805, Capital Budget and Improvement Plan Project Authorization to Require Weekly Written Notice of Grant Applications to be Read, Received, and Filed by City Council. Bill 424, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 219 Operating Budget by Revising Section 21903 Collaborative Budgeting Process to Require Weekly Written Notice of Grant Applications to be Read, Received, and Filed by City Council.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned last week, we're working on a just very minor amendment to clarify the guidelines and the scope of the Equitable Development Trust Fund. I don't have the written amendment today, so I'm still going back and forth with planning, and I'm voting in favor today. It will be a simple amendment that we can make just in the coming weeks when it's done, and that what I'm anticipating is that when the Planning Department is finished with its actual guidelines, they can just bring forward a resolution for us to approve those separately. So, again, I'm voting in favor today, and I would just want to say thank you to Director of City Planning and the Planning Department for just working this out with us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, or the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 463, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 420, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Spring Hill Park Rehabilitation Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $562,605, with a match of $562,605 from the city of Pittsburgh's 2024 capital budget for a total project cost of $1,125,210 for this stated purpose. Bill 421, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for assistance with construction of a new bus shelter within the public right-of-way of Penn Avenue near the intersection of North St. Clair Street in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, or the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilperson Bob Sharland, presenting on the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 468, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 417, Resolution Amending Resolution 309 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Commission on Human Relations to expand the agreement with King 360 to include two additional software licenses yearly by increasing the approved amount by $5,924.97 for an amended total cost not to exceed $59,865.72 over five years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, or the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill, having received the finally, the, excuse me, received the legally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick for Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 467, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 277, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article IV Planning Districts 908 Public Realm Districts and 90901 Specially Planned Districts in Article V Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, Section 91102 Use Table and Section 91104 Use Standards to Remove the Review of Sidewalk Cafes from the Zoning Code. And Bill 426, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Oakland Business Improvement District Innovate Pittsburgh Partnership by $5,000 and Steel City Boxing Association by $2,000 and Increasing Pittsburgh National Youth Boxing by $7,000 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, or the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 465, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 418, Resolution Amending Resolution 317 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the approved amount by $70,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $244,000 over four years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, or the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received the legally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. And finally, we have Councilman Cory Mosley presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 466, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for May 8, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 425, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Council as a Body to Pay Annual Membership Dues for 2024 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghanies for the Connect Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $6,891.
Bills have, having heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill, having received the legally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to motion resolutions. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to, I know that the community is upset and hearing a lot of things in the media lately, and I just want to make sure people understand the council, even though we may not speak publicly a lot about some of the things, we are doing our due diligence, looking behind the scenes, working behind the scenes and trying to figure out what exactly is going on with some things, including the Juneteenth event and how that might be mediated in some way. And maybe it can't be, but then B. Marshall can continue to do his event, and the city can do their event. But I do want to say that we've also given money to the veterans, the same amount of money that we gave for the veterans' contract last year as well. So if we're going to do RFPs for that, I wonder what we mean, that means for the veterans.
You mean for the July 4th event?
No, for Veterans Day, I think it was. I'm pretty sure it was Veterans Day. We did one for the Veterans Day as well. I'll check, but I'm pretty sure it was Veterans Day.
Okay.
The Veterans Day Parade.
Got you.
Yeah. And so I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, it's consistent and that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city as a whole, and that I feel like people were feeling frustrated and divided, and I'm hoping somebody with a calmer spirit and calmer heart than me can mediate this somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 8th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our regular standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill up the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, tomorrow at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda relative to the increasing the affordability, attainability, and abundance of housing in the city. This is chaired by Councilman Mosley. Also, today at 3:00 p.m., there'll be an executive session on litigation matters. Everyone was present. We need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.